Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg, Monday, November 6, 2023 town meeting. At this time, I'll ask anybody in the room to please turn off their phone or silence her phone in respect to the decorum of our meeting. Now I will ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just as.
Future meetings. Parks Committee meeting will occur Tuesday, November 21st, 2023 at 7:30 PM here at the town office. The Christmas tree lighting will occur on December 4th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in front of the community center. The Board of Commissioners will meet again on December 5th, 2023. At 7:00 PM at the town office. Okay, and that will be the Tuesday following the Monday tree lighting. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any questions or comments that we feel that need to be modified or added to enhance the October 2nd, 2023 meeting? Hearing none is our motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Bowman-Polat's motion?
A second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Bowman-Polat, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving those minutes from the October 2nd, 2023 meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Anybody have any modifications or enhancements related to the October 18th, 2023 meeting? Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Same move.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Turnquist. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Deputy, we turn to you now for the police report, please. Evening, sir.
Still myself in Barthelow in town. We had one sick day. It's weather training, six training days. There's no staff changes. Myself and Barthelow went to an advanced roadside impairment training, which, after that, I had a DUI right outside of. Barthelow had in-service training, two and a half days. We both went to the senior center and spoke. I did the mother CD school. Did that first class on the 20th. I mean, trick-or-treating grade went well. No fleet issues with our vehicles. We handled 133 calls for service. We had five criminal arrests. Twenty-three traffic stops and that's everything I.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the deputy at this time? No. Thank you very much, sir. We move from the deputy's report to the town manager's report.
Good evening. This was the town manager's court for September of 2023. You have my report in front of you. I'll just highlight some basic areas. You'll see some of the duties staff did for the streets and the parks related to water. At the time of this report, Rainbow Lake was 1.7 feet below the spillway. As of today, we are 2.2 feet below. It's reading a 14.4 depth. The water quality at the lake is deteriorating. We've had to increase the number of backwashes. Our wells are dropping, but not steadily. So we've staff repaired a couple of leaks the last two weeks, so we're hoping to see a difference. With that, the amount of backwash in September was 13.67% related to water. We. The amount treated wastewater for wild water was 22.59%. We had no spills of untreated sewage. We did exceed the plant design's capacity four times. We currently, at the end of September, had a rain deficit of 2.25 inches. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of November. Just note where the staff had to turn on wells four and five due to the poor water quality from the lake. Staff is working with Conaway on the pump station project. We're hoping to have shovels in the ground by the end of the year. And they did fix a lick leak on One Welty Avenue as well as one on at the church on West Main Street. That's my manager's report for September.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the manager at this time regarding the report? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so we turn to the commissioners for commissioner comments. Commissioner Turnquist.
Planner's report.
Oh, I jumped. I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Ritz, where are you?
Do you want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. So this is the planner's report. In the month of October, we issued seven zoning permits and some development updates include a pre-construction meeting with Federal Stone. They plan to start their project in December. For the Seaton Village subdivision application, we're awaiting a forest conservation application. And then we have a new project called Emmitsburg Distillery. It'll go in the Eastern industrial park lot four and the site plan improvement plan have been received and they're going to be reviewed by the planning commission. Nothing much has changed in terms of development pipeline since last month. The general permit for our MS4 has been extended until new permit term starts indefinitely, sorry. And then there was a progress report due later, the last month that was submitted on the 26th. Comprehensive plan. It's an existing condition checker started in progress. There was one public visioning workshop on October 30th. A report will be ready soon. Upcoming upcoming events contrary to what's there. These public visioning workshops are in the future. So instead of 2023, they should say 2024, in January, February, and March. And a couple of grants we're working on for Silo Hill Basin Maintenance and the second one for Keep Maryland Beautiful. The application was submitted last Friday, actually. And these are some meetings that that I've attended.
Thank you. Do I have any questions for the planner regarding the report? Just a quick one related to attendance for the visioning meeting in October. Have that, were the numbers okay or was it light or heavy?
Um, I would say most of these seats were filled, so that was.
That's excellent. Yeah, terrific. Okay, good. That's what we get to keep that up moving forward. Okay, thank you. That's appreciated. Okay, so yes, I jumped the gun. It's a bad habit. We now turn to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes. So I wanted to take this opportunity to mention the new community garden that's next to town hall. We owe a great deal of gratitude to Mr. Jack Deffrich. I think he's here tonight, maybe. There he is. Jack was instrumental in seeing this project blossom, no pun intended. Jack and his lovely wife not only donated their time to this project, but financially contributed as well. I'm sure a lot of blood, sweat, and tears have gone into this endeavor. Stories of the community garden can be read on the Emmitsburg Youth Community Garden Facebook page. It's quite humorous. Also, a shout out to the town staff for their financial support of the project. And I hope the Board of Commissioners will be able to set aside a small budget for this project during the next budget cycle. So a special thanks to Jack and all those who helped with the garden. I know it was a large effort for all those that were involved. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney?
I just want to thank everybody for their help with Halloween. Everything went well. All the organizations all came together to help with the parade and and the trick-or-treating and the party we had at the fair hall. So it takes a lot of work, but it went really well. And we had a good night. So thanks for everybody.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Bowman-Polat.
Um, I wanted to echo what Commissioner Sweeney said, and thank you to all the organizations, Lines Club deputies and everyone who helped to make Halloween a success. Luckily, the weather held out, although it was a little chilly. And thank you to all the applicants who applied for the empty commissioner seat and answered the call to serve the town. I know that that is not an easy decision and we do appreciate everyone who did come out and apply for that position. Third, comprehensive plan. Thank you to everyone in town who was able to show up and give input as to where they would like to see that comprehensive plan go in the future. It's very important to have our community feedback. And I would encourage anybody who can intend attend in person. Likewise, I think maybe moving forward, there might be an option to watch, but not participate due to the nature of the workshop, so to speak. Only suggestion I had was to keep up the the surveys that are coming out. I think it's a really nice way to get public feedback and especially as we move forward to make those questions more and more specific so that we can really help guide people's thoughts so that we can channel that information correctly. So thank you for all the hard work on that. Um, quick summary of citizens advisory. I don't know where else it would fit, correct? Okay, okay. So we we participants of citizens advisory reflected briefly on farmer's market and I think that they in agreement with the the town have thought about changes that might need to come forward before next year. And so if and I believe those changes would have to be before that calendar is published. So we were were more than happy to.
Yeah, I sent you an email late this afternoon.
Yes.
I'm sorry. It took me a while to put it all together.
So do we, I did see the email.
So the the hours of operation and then the dates would need to be determined like by tomorrow to get the calendar printed by the end of the year. The rest of the things we can certainly work through. I think I gave you what Kadeem's recommendations were from the surveys with the vendors and then talking with the mayor about what he what Kadeem had found in the surveys.
Sure. So that doesn't require us putting on it on the agenda and voting on it, correct? Okay, good, because that was his thoughts aligned with what the.
Okay, good. And then everything else we can certainly talk about.
Sure.
Ahead of time.
Okay, that works. There was also questions about parking meters and questions and recommendations that came up as to how to maximize new meters if and when that happens. Especially the concern was to keep the spaces near the square turning over, knowing that that is highly sought after spaces. I did encourage them to come out when the time is right to express, to ask those questions. There was concern for the snow emergency plan and I assure them that this is still work in progress. The map for alternate parking lots are still are still coming. That needs to be hashed out. They were eager to see the map so they could make plans accordingly so that they know what it's going to be like to move their car if they need to. The concern did come up from a few of the members about, you know, are we thinking about what to do with those who may be handicapped and might have trouble parking in a lot that's far away? And then walking back with ice and snow. I don't have a a recommendation. It was just something for us to consider. And also posting that map consistently when it's ready. We had concern about marijuana dispensaries since the new updated law. Talking to town staff, I know that's something we can put on the agenda after the new year as we hammer out how the town wants to move forward. There was lots of suggestions on Breast Cancer Awareness Month about going pink, selling light bulbs, or maybe pink pinwheels in honor of somebody. And it was something that the Citizens Advisory Committer Committee members were willing to help with. That's something we wanted to pursue. And of course, they asked to get it about the time change and I assure them that's on the agenda for December. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. The biggest source of contact I've had with community has related to still dealing with understanding of the water and what the ARPA proposal related to. So I think as we move through that, I think that will be perceived to be good news. There is other good news to share. Certainly, we're going to hear later from an individual who is going to be making tiny libraries for the town that will occur during public comment. Next, we have the Turkey Trot. The Turkey Trot will occur on Thanksgiving Day. And the Turkey Trot will be expanded. It is typically a five-mile run and a one-mile walk in the park. This year, dogs are being added. So if you want to walk your dog for a mile or you want to run with your dog for five miles, you are welcome to do so. The sign up is linked through the town website and it's also on a website titled runreg.com. And that is something I'm looking forward to myself. I know you guys are. It will be free hot cider. There will be the fire blazing in the pavilion. It is a town tradition that's good that goes way back and it's very fun. Even if you're not a trotter or a walker, show up, you'll have a nice time. It is fun. So please come on out. In the past three weeks, two weeks, gosh, I've had multiple meetings with town staff. I've had discussions with commissioners related to this evening's meeting and definitely some meetings related to the Turkey Trot. Beyond that, look forward to seeing everybody at the Turkey Trot. So and my comments there and we now turn to the mayor, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't think it would feel so different setting at this end of the table, but it does. I'm actually nervous again. It's been a been a great first month, been a busy month. And I've mentioned to several of the commissioners that until you take some time and sit here in the office, you don't realize how many moving parts there are and how quick you can go from taking payment from a water bill to having a sewer backup to having a parking complaint to, you know, all those things. And it makes you appreciate what the staff goes through every day. And it opened my eyes, even though I've been on the board for four years, you don't realize all the the works that that happen. And the same way out on the in the streets with our maintenance crews. I've tried to spend some time with them and how they're they're being pulled in so many different directions. We really need to appreciate what we what we have here in our staff and I for one didn't fully. But I do now. So thank you to the staff. And for the first month, it's been quite a challenge for them. They've they've been helping me and I got a feeling they've been saying under their breath, is he really this dumb? You know? The 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 most things I did was try to get unlocked out of things I locked myself out of. I think they got me locked out of my voicemail three times. My email four times and the office twice. So other than that, I've been I've been getting around pretty well. I don't know if Jill had mentioned it or not, but I attended the construction meeting for Federal Stone, which was really exciting. It's going to bring probably 50 to 70 jobs to Emmitsburg. We hate to take a business from Thurmont, but it was kind of fun. And he has also sold all of his lots out there. So that whole partial land behind Emmitsburg Glass will be filled up and that's exciting. That's really exciting. And then I just got to get on my soapbox for a minute. If there's one thing that I that really kind of irks me is when we receive emails and letters unsigned. And of course, they're usually not good news. They're not Christmas cards. It's people. People are really brave when they don't have to sign something. And that's very irritating, especially when we have the open door policy that we have that that I'll discuss anything with anybody. But to, you know, stick a letter in the mail unsigned and take shots at not only our staff, but our town in general, it gets frustrating. So to those people that like to do that, please call me. Please come and sit down and talk to me and we'll we'll talk about your concerns. We'll try to fix your concerns. We'll take your suggestions. We'll do everything, but the unsigned letters, they're gonna, they're gonna go in a garbage can because it's just, that's not the way we do business. But other than that, it's been a great month. Thank you all for being here. Kind of excited to see such a big crowd. I hope I can say that when the meeting's over because I don't know what you're here for. So but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so this time we turn to public comment. We have numerous folks who are here signed up to speak. Process wise, you'll be invited to come up to the podium. We asked you, please introduce yourself. Please share if you are a resident of the town or not. You do not need to give your home address. And beyond that, our time four minutes. Okay, and we have our sort of our traffic light here to give you an idea where you are time wise. Don't feel like you have to use all four minutes if you don't feel obligated that you have to. So we'll go from there. So at this time, I turn to Mr. Eric Sloan. Mr. Sloan, I invite you up.
Eric Sloan, I live here in town. First one on the list for those of us who live in town would be public drunkenness. It was just like watching some kind of a cheap B movie with the Mount students up and down the street. Cases of beer in hand and watching one or two of them over in the Dollar General parking lot long after it closed, throwing their guts up because they have been drinking too much. And report from some people I know, a huge party that the, when the sheriffs finally got a 911 call to it, went to it and then they said it was like cockroaches when you flick the light switch on when the sheriff's got there, you know, at least 100, 150 Mount students just running. I know in most towns when I was a sailor, if we'd have done that, we'd have been looking at the gray bar motel from the inside. So we need to clamp down on public drunkenness. Also, bonfires. There's one particular place that's over towards Emmett Gardens. I can see from where I live. And it's not one of those little contained pits. It's a, we raked out a six-foot area in the yard, piled up everything we could burn and set it on fire. 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night. Not sure legitimacy on that, but I don't think that we want to have 911 calls and fire and going out and putting that out. The possibility of some form of a citizens oversight for the town government that would, you know, be made up of, say, five people that are in businesses here and five people that are taxpayers to monitor exactly what goes on with the town because I get told for any more points sitting in a somewhere getting something to eat from people are running into is like, we have all these people. What do they do? I see them riding around in their cars all day long. And it's like, well, you know, write a note, put your name on it, send it in. And as far as things that come in with no names, that's been a standard out of the town office for as long as I lived here. I had a note stuck in my front door one time. Shovel the snow off your sidewalk. It was typed up from the town in an envelope. I called him up and said, you know, what's this about? Says he got a shovel stove. He says anonymous safety complaint. Get it done. Get it done now. The code says you have 24 hours after cessation of the snow. And it's the anonymous complaints coming out of the town office have been common. I had the dog patrol person stocking my yard for at least two weeks. And when Frankie Hobbs is still alive, he's the one that told me about it. And I watched her go around through the field behind the house, taking pictures. Well, I figured when she had enough courage, she'd come up and she said, well, we had an anonymous 911 complaint about your dogs getting out of the yard, chasing people. Yeah, I explained where I said, first of all, they'd have to unlock the crates, get out of the crates, unlock the back door, come out of the back door, come over the fence, chase people, go back over the fence, back in the house, lock the door, get back in the crates, lock the crate. She said, well, well, they weren't your dogs. See, I called her bluff and there was no backing to it because it was an anonymous complaint. It was a method of harassment. It's been on for a long time in this town. And you're right with shuttling stuff into the garbage. That's the only way you're going to deal with it. And that's one of the things I brought up a while ago. When there's a complaint about something, top of that list should be the complainer's name. I, Bob, Joe, Barry, whatever saw in this person's yard. The grass was like nine inches tall. And that goes on to the complaint that's sent out to the zoning or coordinates violation to the citizen or business. That will put a big cure on all that because when somebody has to put their name on it, it's going to stop because they're going to say, whoa, I'm in trouble if I do that. No more hiding behind everything. That's my four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Okay, we now turn to Mr. Jack Waller. Did I say that? Yeah, Mr. Hello.
I'm Jack Waller. I live here in town, but I was up on Hank and Di Rose. I'm affected by the town. My question has to do with the Frederick Coast recent article about the water usage and how far down the lake is and how bad the quality of the water is and also the fact one well was 12 foot deep. 12 foot below, almost 39 feet below.
Mr. Weller, address it to me and we'll talk to the staff. Oh, is is your microphone on? Is the red light on on your button?
Well, it is now.
There you go. Okay, all right.
So did you hear anything I said?
We did. I don't, I can't speak for, okay, the community. All right.
They heard me?
We're clear?
All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is this, what was in the Frederick paper? Was that accurate?
Yes.
Yes.
So it just seem, it just seems to me that if the water is you're having trouble getting good water and you got the mound over there that's willing to to give you some, not give it to you, sell it to you, which I've, since I worked there, I know that a lot of water went down into the town. And I know you're worried about the PSAs in there, but I think it was, it just seems like if you're in a situation like this, that it would be diluted pretty good anyway because you're just mixing in with what you got. And so the other thing I wanted to ask is, since I live up there and my well is, our well is up there, which well is 39 feet? Where is well three?
I don't have the map with me. So we typically don't disclose the locations of the wells anyway. But I don't have the map with me to tell me exactly which where well three is. I need my map. If you, if you send me an email, I can look into it for you.
Okay, what I was the one question, but the other one is, I'm not familiar with the underground. In other words, are we all in the same aquifer or is it like separate ones for these different wells and like, you know?
I don't know. Let's turn to staff.
All our current wells online are from the same aquifer. We have two wells that are not online that are on a different aquifer.
Okay. And is it, is it accurate to characterize the Rainbow Lake reservoir and the smaller reservoirs on the mountain? Those are surface fed. They're not right. They're not like seep fed, as it were. So it's typically rely on rainwater or precipitation. So I hope that adds some clarity.
Yes. Okay. Well, the only only other thing I wanted to ask is the water from the mound that that you were getting, does that go through further treatment with your equipment here? Or is that already treated water that comes from the college? When you got it?
I believe it was treated.
From the mound to the town?
From what we purchased from the mound, what we did, what we had. It was pre-treated, I thought.
Right. It's treated at the mound and then flows into ours. I don't want to speak too much on treatment. I'd rather have Jared address that kind of question. So anyway, if you want to send me an email, I can certainly get you those answers, but it's treated at the mound. We, we actually obtained such little water from the mound that it will not make a difference right now at the, for the depths of the lake and the well.
My last concern, not concern, just a recommendation, which I've said before to a couple of people here, is that I think there should be a porta pott put up there by the Rainbow Lake. They have one down at the visitor center down at Topton National Park that, pretty nice. And they they keep her clean. I mean, they, anyway, that's just, I just think that eventually you're going to need one up there because a lot of people use that darn thing and you never know when when you're going to need it.
Sure, sure, sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can I just, yes, sir. Mr. Mr. Davis, yes.
The the water with the mound, I'll be meeting with the university next Wednesday. And that's one of the things on my list to see what their plans are in the future and whether that's a a source for us to consider. At one time, you know, Mayor Briggs did did meet with them and they were. At one time, you know, Mayor Briggs did, did meet with them and there was some discussion. So I'm hoping that we can bring that discussion back up and maybe be a win-win for both us and the universities. And I'll keep you posted.
Mr. Davis, I'll piggyback on that. I, I met with President Trainer at the mound about a month and a half ago approximately. And the last thing that our conversation was about their water and the forever chemical issue. And they take it profoundly seriously and they are putting a lot of energy and investment into addressing that. So they don't take it lightly. Okay, so at this time, we turn now to Ms. Kayla Dulcet. Now I'm going to jump into sort of frame this. Ms. Dulcet is pursuing her Eagle Scout status with the Boy Scouts. She approached me with a project that she'll discuss in a moment. And she has been nothing but impressive with her efforts to see this project. The floor is yours. So introduce yourself, tell us where you're from and you have your.
As Mr. O'Donnell's already said, my name is Kayla Dulcet. I come a trip through seventy out of Thermont. And I came to Emmitsburg to ask to propose this possible Eagle project. The Eagle project I wanted to do is for little libraries because I love reading and I just kind of want to share that. And I wanted to build two here in Emmitsburg. And so this is for my Eagle Scout. My timeline to get it done was hopefully by beginning of next year, maybe February, March, something around that timeframe. My goal obviously is to have those two things built and then, but in order to move anywhere to actually start building my project, I just need the town to approve it. Per BSA standards, they're really like strict about that sort of thing. So I need a signature before I can even start getting my materials or start asking for anything before I can even basically start doing anything. That's really all to say, if you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Do you already have locations for your mini libraries?
Yes. Did you want to know what they are?
Is there one at the Knights of Columbus? No.
That's a different, she will be making them, they are forthcoming.
Gotcha, I'm sorry. Well, thank you for the mini libraries there.
They would either be at Silo Hill Park or the Community Park, as I was discussing with Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you.
So Kayla, I've got good news, having spoken with staff, maybe I should let staff speak. No, alright. So based on the diagrams you submitted with your white paper, today town staff approved the designs. The signature will be forthcoming, which is good news, so we can get you moving along. We have a room full of people who I'm sure might have supplies who could help you if they got in contact. And if you could provide a list of the specific supplies you needed, the town could investigate what it has as surplus and perhaps make available. So I hope that helps the process.
Right, that's.
Okay. Oh, sure, Mr. Sweeney.
Also, we have some organizations in town who would help, Alliance Club, Knights of Columbus, the Masons. They would all probably help with your project, giving you money and, or you didn't have to pay for anything.
Do you by any chance need help with stocking it with books? Because I have a bunch. If you do, let me know. Send me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did a great job. Okay, so we move on. Sign up, we have Gene Janor, I'm sorry, Javer, I'm sorry.
I want to discuss the town parking. I received this letter in the water bill, the recent water bill about town parking. But you're not, you're supposed to keep, maintain your cars on your property, not in the roadway. That's what the newsletter said. Along DePaul Street, I'm sorry, St. Joseph Lane, there's no parking at all. And we're at the bottom of the road. Okay, so there shouldn't be any cars parked at the bottom of St. Joseph's Lane because there's no parking at all that on that road. It is a dead end road. The town plows it and salts it all the way to the end, even though it's dead ended. They maintain it. And also, we, we had to pay for the blacktop and we had a water problem out front. We reimbursed the town for paving that end because they dug up that whole end of the road. So I was wondering, how restrictive do we maintain these rules about not parking in certain areas of the town? I mean, like I said, it's in the newsletter.
Right. Ma'am, is this related to the snow emergency announcement that was in the?
Mainly to the parking area.
Okay.
I mean, as long as North Seaton also, when the snow emergency is there, everybody parks on North Seaton. I mean, the cars, they don't tell them away or anything. But this is St. Joseph's Lane.
Sure, sure. Is, can she review your letter for a brief moment? Is that okay? And this is Ms. Willis, she's our town manager. So she's the, the point of contact for, for this in part.
I'm sorry. So Kadim was just putting a little, we're trying to get the word out on different things about parking in town. So this is the no person shall stand or park a vehicle on any public street or public walk right away in town under the following circumstances. So it lists out the five reasons why you can't, certain places you can't park, such as a sidewalk or straddling a curve driveway incident. Entrances, public or public driveways, fire hydrants, and more than forty eight hours.
During the snow emergency?
No, this is just parking. This is just your code in general, all the time.
And I mean, up in.
Yeah, so this is all the time.
The Paul Street, there's a fire hydrant there and it's always being blocked by people who live in those apartments. And it's got an X on it, the spot right in front of the fire hydrant. And some of the cars are always parking there in front of that fire hydrant also.
Yeah, Kadim goes out periodically, you're aware, we're, we'll keep an eye on that one.
Yeah, that's constant. But I was just wondering about the Paul, St. Joseph's Lane.
Okay.
It says you're supposed to park on your own property.
I don't, I guess I don't understand the question, I guess. So basically, there's no parking on St. Joseph's Lane. There's no parking.
Right.
There's no on-street parking.
No on-street parking.
Right.
Right.
But people park there.
Okay, well, I will tell Kadim to keep an eye out.
Because it says here, it says you should park, park your own property.
Correct. You're right. You're absolutely right. On St. Joseph's Lane. So I will get ahold of Kadim tomorrow and have him follow up with either you or start getting out there and making some checks and giving some people some notice, warnings, hey, you need to move your car.
Okay, I also was concerned about, well, not abandoned vehicles on, on people's properties, but cars that are on people's properties that have been sitting there for two years or more and not moving. And that's quite, quite a few, at least two places in town that I know of on North Seaton.
I don't know if you're checking, do they have licenses on them currently?
They have their tags, but you can't see the, the back stickers.
Okay.
And there's two cars on North Seaton across from me that have been sitting there for two years, two to three years and not moved out of the driveway.
So is a suggestion and.
I don't know how.
Sure.
Enforcer would see the cars without going on the property.
So, so to try to address that question in sort of a, a generic way in your last set of questions. Kadim Brim is our zoning enforcement officer who also handles the ticketing in town for, for road enforcement and such. If you were to leave contact, we could have him contact you directly and kind of follow up on your specifics. So that way he can look into, you know, each individual item. So that way there's a, there's a solid follow through. Or if you're able to contact him directly through the town office, he's available on the website. His name is Kadim Brim, B R I M, the brim of a hat. And I know for a fact he'd be very happy to discuss with you what your concerns are, and I know he'd be very good about following through on it. So, but if, if you want to leave a contact, I'd be happy to expedite that for you if that's okay.
I'll just give her one of my business cards. It has my email address on it and, and phone number. So if you want to follow up with me tomorrow or the next day. But I'll certainly get ahold of Kadim and, and we're fully aware of some of these abandoned vehicles, but we can't go on the property verify tags.
Right.
And so our hands are kind of tied in that, for that situation, but we'll certainly look into the other two for sure.
One other thing, if I can, about people's yards if they're not maintained. In other words, it's like a dump site in the backyard. You see it through the side, the front yard. Is there any way something can be done about that?
Again, that would be the enforcement officer who would look at something like that and he'd apply the codes to assess the standard. So. I hope that, does this give you a start? I mean, you feel like you've got a point of contact and you have, it means that we can resolve these things as best we can. Okay. So Ms. Willis will give you a card and please feel free to follow up with any of us. I'm happy to talk to you and we can make sure that we're moving through these things.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. Thank you for coming in. Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I think you skipped one public comment.
There's Mr. Costco who is signed up for the glow fiber presentation. Is that correct? My assumption is that you're, you're there for that. Okay, alright. So. Bernice, I'm sorry if I got that wrong, or Bernie, signed up about dog leavings. Oh, hey, please come on up. Hello, good evening. You know, I'm not going to talk about stereotypes about doctors and their handwriting, but, you know.
I, my defense is that I flunked handwriting from first grade forward. And of course, my only leftover vocation left was to be a doctor. Because I did try to teach high school for, but for all those people who do teach, I salute you because it was the toughest job I had besides raising my kids. So, however, Emmitsburg is a walking town. At least that is our goal. And I support, everybody needs a support dog and that, you know, that's help people stay healthy in different ways, but it is a concern that if someone takes the responsibility of having an animal, that they would take responsibility of their responsibility to the community in which they live. And I am quite a walker in this town. And I keep encountering large and small piles of uncollected poop. And one of them was actually right outside of a person's home on South Seaton, not very far down. And I felt bad because that person was stuck possibly with the cleanup because the owner of the animal was nowhere to be found or would not come back and say, oh, excuse me, I have my poop here. So I was wondering if it is possible to have any kind of surveillance that some of the people who aren't aware of the ordinance or whatever could be educated and maybe eventually be held responsible for not collecting their dogs' leavings. And I think that it really makes it very uncomfortable for not just myself, walking through the town, cutting through some grass, like I sometimes cut across from my backyard to the parking lot of the antique mall and want to go shopping there or just make a shortcut. And as I have to look in four directions to see where there's dog do. So I don't know what the town can do, but some kind of help is needed. This is a long ongoing. And I have addressed this privately with other people and nothing has happened, but just please consider that. And since that's my long and short on that, it, and don't tell me it's not a problem because I'm sure it is. The other thing is that we have been blessed with free bikes for kids. Some of them need repair. And they're at our clinic. I've got six of them there now. Some of them need their tires aired up and some need training wheels and some need a kickstand, but they're otherwise in really great shape. And if anyone wants to help in the distribution of those or knows somebody who can use them, they come from little tiny three-wheelers up to, I would say, five, six, seven-year-olds. So. And I have accessed this, the Rotary Club Frederick has donated these bikes and they've kind of run out of takers in their neck of the woods. They would like us to help share. So thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Sure, I can address the, the dog issue. Just today I stopped in the, the maintenance shop and our maintenance superintendent was reviewing our surveillance cameras to, to address the problems you're talking about. And as they identify those people, we are giving them citations. And along with that, we have ordered more cleanup containers with bags that we plan on putting out into some of the developments. And if we need to put more around town, we can do that. So yes, we know it is a concern. And especially at your end of town, unfortunately. Yes, it does. And there's, there's a reason for that. And we'll, I'll talk about that with you some, someday. I'll stop up and see you. Okay.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, sir. We now turn to Ms. Diane Walbrecker.
Hello, Diane Walbrecker, and I live here in town and I'm delighted to see so many people at a public meeting. I remember twenty, twenty-five years ago, when there were so many people at public meetings that they spilled out onto the sidewalks. So this is, this is a really good thing. I wanted to address the commissioner process, but I believe that I am at least one meeting, maybe two meetings too late about the process of selecting a commissioner. So I would write that decision as already been made about how that process is going to work, correct?
There will be a process defined moving forward. So no, you're not too late to weigh in on enhancing the process that exists. So I, I will hypothesize the board wants to see improvement there based on what's been said in the last public meeting. And as such, I know that we're going to make it a priority to address that empty seat process for like.
Moving forward.
Correct, correct.
But not for this particular time.
Correct.
Okay, because I just, and as a commissioner who resigned midterm, I remember the, the whole process and what happened. And I resigned specifically so that the person who, so that I could work for the person to be replaced in the next election, so that the timing was correct. Because I think it's really, really important to have commissioners chosen by the people of Emmitsburg. So just wanted to say that, that's kind of my statement. But anyway, and the, the planning commission meeting, the public visioning workshop was really exciting. And I look forward to, to seeing even more attendance at, at the rest of those. So, thanks. And I echo what Cliff's Commissioner Sweeney said about some of the organizations in town might be willing to help with either the bikes for Bonnie or some of the other issues that are coming forward. Because we've got a lot of great community organizations in town. So, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so that concludes those who've signed up for public comment. So now at this time, we turn to administrative business. So for the sake of clarity, we have no administrative business for this meeting. And then we press on to our consent agenda and. Sorry. Administrative business consent agenda. And then now we go to the treasurer's report. So we go to consent and then treasurer's. So actually, we're, so no, I haven't forgotten you, despite my record. Okay, so we do turn now to consent agenda items staff. We see we're being asked to appoint Patricia Galloway is a full member of the planning commission with the term of November sixth, twenty twenty-three to March first, twenty twenty-six. Board is a reminder, as a consent agenda item, it is our obligation to consider making a motion, considering second, seconding the motions, there is no comment, it's just the vote. So I'll ask, is there a motion to appoint Patricia Galloway as a full member of the planning commission with the term of November sixth, twenty twenty-three to March first, twenty twenty-six? Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Turnquist. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Please say nay. Aye. Anybody against? Please say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries four to zero. This time we now turn to the treasurers report.
We had a beginning cash balance as of October thirty-first. Or October first, sorry, of eight, eight million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. General fund. Cash balance was two point two million. Capital projects one was two hundred thousand dollars. What a fun. I don't know what the cash balance of is zero. Sewer fund is three point six million. ARPA funding. Three point three million and which makes a total of nine million dollars. We had deposits of four hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars total withdrawals was three hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Which left us with the ending balance of eight million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. At the bottom of the report, there's tip the top ten checks for the bottom. If anybody have any question.
No questions for staff or the commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, there's just one thing I'd like to point out. We did change the treasurer's report. A little bit that we, while our end balances just shy of nine million dollars, we did break that down. So you could see where actually all the funding was. But it wasn't, wasn't just nine, nine million sitting there in a big pot. So there's some of it that's already been appropriated to other things and the ARP money that we can only spend for certain things. So we broke that report out to give you all a little better idea of where our funding was. So.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments for staff, the treasurer, the mayor? Is there a motion to accept the report as presented? No, we don't need it. Forgive me. Okay, we're moving on. Okay, we go to item. Okay, the planning commission report.
Hi, so the plan commission met on September twenty-fifth. They will meet again in December. There was a public visioning workshop for the company as a plan, but that's not the regular. Plan commission meeting. And yeah, it's about it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff related to the planning commission? Presentation. Thank you. All right. So we go to agenda item number one for consideration, approval of new commissioner. So board, I turn to you. Is there a motion to identify? A candidate for the vacancy of commissioner at this time.
I nominate Jim Hoover. For the, to fill the fifth commissioner's seat.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Palit. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Please say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Mr. Hoover, congratulations. Commissioner Hoover, again, congratulations. All right. So at this time we move to agenda item number two, the swearing in of our new commissioner, Mr. Jim Hoover. Welcome back.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Raise your right hand. I Frank Davis.
I Jim Hoover.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland. And support the constitution and laws thereof and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment diligently, equally without presidential. Portionality or prejudice execute the office of commissioner for the town of Emmitsburg. According to the constitution and laws of this state and the charter and code of the town of Emmitsburg. If so, say I do.
I do.
Take your seat.
Okay, this time we turn to agenda item number three, but first, Mr. Hoover, welcome. We turn to agenda item number three, and this is for consideration, the reorganization of the board of commissioners. In years past, we've heard from the executive who's made suggestions. Mayor Davis very clear that he intends to see the board put forward their intent for the board's organization. Positions for consideration are the president of the board, the vice president of the board, the treasurer. Parks and Recreation Committee liaison, planning and zoning liaison, and the Citizens Advisory Committee liaison. And those are the positions, correct?
That's correct.
Great. Okay. All right. So. Does anybody have any proposals or positions that they want to see themselves fill at this time?
I would like to stay as treasurer, please.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else?
I was. Go ahead.
I was gonna make a nomination if I can do that.
Sure.
Um, I nominate Commissioner Amy Bowman-Palit for the position of board president. Since being elected to the board, Amy has provided sound logic and reasoning in her decision making. She provides thoughtful input in discussions, seeks to understand all issues and respects differing opinions. Change provides opportunities for newer board members to better serve their community. And I feel that Amy's qualifications are uniquely suited for this position.
Thank you. Do you accept the nominee?
I do.
Okay, very good. Okay, all right. Other positions for consideration remain vice president. Parks and Recreation, Planning and Zoning, and Citizens Advisory Committee.
Oh, I was also are going to make a, in my.
Sure, absolutely.
Nomination for treasurer for Commissioner Turnquist with her. Federal government experience and managing budgets and her thoughtful questions that she's provided. Over the past year and her questioning on the planning commission and in the short time she's been with us on commissioner. I think she would be a good addition.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Well, I wasn't prepared here to make nominations. Wasn't prepared to make the nominations.
Is there a position that you find, would find interesting? Vice President, Parks and Recreation, Planning and Zoning, and Citizens Advisory?
Vice President.
Vice President, okay. Mr. Hoover. Okay. I would be happy to sit with Parks and Recreation and step back from being board president if the board is aligned with that. Okay, so now at this time, I have the question of. Planning and zoning and citizens advisory.
I would be happy to stay on as the liaison for the planning commission. I've been a member of the planning commission for almost a year now and. I wouldn't mind staying in that role, well, a different role, but. I wouldn't mind unless somebody else is really keen to take on that role in the planning commission. I'd be happy to service the liaison.
Okay. Okay, and for citizens advisory.
I'm currently the liaison for citizens advisory. Whether or not. I, I would continue in that role would depend on what responsibilities I have moving forward. So. It's hard for me to say either way.
Sure. Okay, so you want to hear a vote for president first? Is that what you're saying?
Because I think both might be a little hard with my time and also having a family and working a day job too. As much as I would like to divide myself into fifteen.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Resident, may I ask, would Commissioner Sweeney be going to take the citizen advisory? I would like the new commit, well, the new commissioners do have it, but I've done, did all the commissioner, commissioner seats at least four times or five. I wouldn't mind you, vice president, again, I've done that one time. If the treasurer is not, if I'm not nominated for the treasurer, so. I am busy with a lot of organizations in town, so the committees are hard for me to do besides the, you know, the part, so. And I've done them already four or five times. I think the new commissioners and the new people on the board should be doing the commissioner seats.
Okay, so. Mr. Sweeney, your intent is to stick with treasury if the board so chooses in a vote, is that correct? Or vice president, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you did say that. Okay, I do have that noted here. Okay, all right. If you had a preference, so. Voting wise and in respect to your seniority. Would you choose treasurer or would you choose vice president if we move through this?
Vice President, I guess I would choose.
Okay.
If I don't do treasure.
Okay. So. Process wise, as it's not delineated terribly clearly, I will move through. Through president to vice president to treasurer to parks and rec to planning and zoning to citizens advisory. Does anybody have any concerns about that for our process? No, okay, all right, so. All in favor of Commissioner Bowman-Palit as president, please say aye.
Aye, aye, am I allowed to vote?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
You're a sitting commissioner, yes, you're allowed to vote. Okay, aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries five to zero. Congratulations. Okay. For vice president. We have Commissioner Sweeney, we have Commissioner Hoover. I'm trying to do this equitably. Board, I have a question for you. I don't know if you would want me to go with seniority and put Mr. Sweeney up to the, to the job first or Mr. Hoover? Does anybody on the board have any opinions on who they want to hear first or how they want to hear it? No, okay. All right, well, I'll go with Mr. Hoover who spoke first on the item. So all in favor of Mr. Hoover as vice president, please say aye.
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 Understood. Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay. Treasurer. Commissioner Turnquist therefore is uncontested for this. All in favor of Commissioner Turnquist for treasurer, please say aye.
Wait, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, ma'am.
It's supposed to be Commissioner Sweeney and Commissioner Turnquist for treasurer. Because then.
Okay. Yes, yes, thank you. Contest it, forgive me. Okay. New process. All right, so all in favor of Mr. Sweeney as treasurer, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay, okay. Mr. Hoover, nay, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so in favor Commissioner Sweeney, Commissioner O'Donnell for Sweeney's treasure. Nays were Commissioner Hoover, Commissioner Turnquist, Commissioner Bowman-Palit. Okay, and therefore. Commissioner Turnquist for treasurer. All in favor of Commissioner Turnquist as treasurer, please say aye.
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 Okay, nay, I'll say nay.
Nay.
And nay, okay, very good. So a reverse of the order in the first vote. Okay, thank you. All right. For Parks and Recreation, well. Who's our current vice president at the moment? Or who is our treasurer? That would be you. So you would have to handle that vote, sir. Oh, basically for. For Parks and Recreation.
For Parks and Recreation, the Commissioner O'Donnell, I need a nomination.
So moved.
Okay, I'm voting for that now.
A second.
You have a second.
Second.
All favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Five to zero.
Okay, for planning and zoning, we have Commissioner Turnquist. And that is it. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Okay, and for citizens advisory, we have no one at this time.
Your VP.
Mr. Vice President, would you consider?
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Okay, so all in favor of Commissioner Hoover serving as citizens advisory commissioner, the commission liaison, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, so the reorganized board will be.
Can you just go down them just so we make sure we have absolutely right?
I'm gonna do that now. I'm gonna make sure we're right. So the reorganization will be president, Commissioner Bowman-Palit. Vice President, Commissioner Hoover, Treasurer, Commissioner. Turnquist. Parks and Recreation, Commissioner O'Donnell. And zoning. I have a blank there. Commissioner Turnquist, okay, all right. And citizens advisory committee, Commissioner Hoover. Okay. Okay, all right.
It's only gonna be for ten months.
Okay, sure, absolutely. Okay, staff, do you have clarity on it? All right, so. Is there a motion to accept the board as reorgan?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Hoover's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Hoover, seconded by Commissioner Turnquist. Is there any other comment? Okay. I called the seat at the end. All right.
I had just Commissioner Sweeney will need you to sign checks at least for the next two weeks until we can get new signer cards.
Okay.
PNC's got a new system going on and it doesn't turn around very quickly.
Okay, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody against? Please say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, and with that.
Do have a question. How do we add trails to parks and rec? Because I think that's appropriate that we do that, number one, for grant purposes. How do we go about that?
I think we would have, as a board, we would have to see that as. An ordinance adding to the purview of the Parks and Rec Committee. And also we'd have to review how trails are viewed. On town land. But I think that, I mean, it, it's, it would be the will of the board if it's put forward in the form of a policy vote. If that makes sense.
Yeah, does anybody think, also think that's a, I mean, trails, bikes, that's pretty much parks and rec, I would think. I don't know why it was ever separated, so.
When we write the grants, we write our grants under parks for the trails. So it's logical.
Okay.
I think I agree with an ordinance change, adding that duty under the Parks and Rec Committee. And then just looking at how we budget for next year, how you want to incorporate where we do trails.
Okay. It's a great question. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Okay, so with that, I will say as former board president, thank you all very much for. Allowing me the honor to do this job and I am now officially stepping down. Commissioner, president, I hand over the seat to you. It starts this moment at the meeting, yes. The vote was, the vote was made, so we do the handoff. That's how I've always witnessed.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Past, so. Okay.
And Tim and Cliff, thank you very much for your years of service.
Here's your proclamation for today. And. This, and this is where I am on page. Twenty-nine and forty-six, so. Twenty-nine and forty-six, so. Wait, you hop over? Shift down to. PNC account.
I'll give you the key. Okay, yeah. Teach me everything. Or tell me everything.
Kind of makes it good that he's right next to me, because I can say, and why did you do that again to fifteen years ago?
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell said I may be the first president in history, I don't know if that's true, but it feels kind of momentous. So, thank you. Okay, continuing with, um, our fourth item on the agenda for consideration, proclamation of the MML Municipal Government Works Month. Mayor Davis, did you want to read the proclamation?
Huh huh.
No breathing room, that's okay, I'll take it, okay, um. Proclamation Municipal Government Works Month, November twenty twenty-three, the mayor and the Board of Commissioners of the town of Emmitsburg. Pro proclaim November twenty twenty-three to be Municipal Government Works Month, whereas the town was established in seventeen eighty-five. And whereas Maryland is home to one hundred fifty-six other municipalities. And whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. And whereas, in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation. The town of Emmitsburg is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents maintaining. Natural and historic sites and structures and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the Board of Commissioners of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby join the Maryland Municipal League. In declaring November twenty twenty-three to be Municipal Government Works Month in Emmitsburg, adopted this day. This sixth day of November twenty twenty-three will be signed by, uh, Mayor Davis and. My.
Yourself.
Myself.
Yeah, sprint and sprint and a new one.
Yeah. And myself. Is there any discussion relating to the proclamation as written? Nope, okay, hearing none, is there a motion to accept the proclamation as written? Thank you. Thank you. Motion was made by Commissioner Hoover, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, proclamation has been accepted by, oh, I, sorry, I forgot that part. Uh, five to zero, I'll get used to that, I think. Okay, thank you. Going on to a jet, I don't, agenda item number five, for consideration, standard operating procedure for the community legacy facade grants. Um, town staff, do we want to turn to you to discuss any changes or updates?
Yeah, and Julia can go over, um, just some of the, the changes that were made on page thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. And then there's a clean version on page, it starts on page thirty-seven.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, some of the changes we've made was, um, the first one is. Um, from December thirty-first, we changed it to January thirty-first to give applicants more time, that'll, that'll be when the applications. Uh, are due, um, the second change is, um, the SOP will require one estimate for, um. From a licensed contractor as opposed to two. And, um, the sustainable community work group meeting, uh, will be. Set, set to take place in the evening as opposed to during the day. Um. And then, uh, this SOP also establishes that this, a CWG must consist of. No more than five members and no, no less than three members to achieve a quorum. Um, we also took out the section, um, regarding the, uh, the guidelines that SG. SCWG should follow, this will be included in their guidelines and not in the SOP. And, um. We changed the last paragraph maintenance of improvements and made it. Uh, so that, um, the language says to encourage property owners to maintain the improvements without any penalty.
Thank you. Uh, turning to the board, any discussion, uh, questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, yes, I have kind of all the above. Um, it's not necessarily about the SOP, but more about the, the overarching process. Um, I wasn't on the board the last couple of times, this SOP was discussed. Um, so I wanted to throw out some ideas for consideration. Um, first thing is the legacy grant doesn't require a fifty percent match by the applicant, nor a max. Grant on behalf of the resident of twelve thousand five hundred. Um, I don't know if that was agreed upon. By the board at some point when the legacy grant was developed. We want to speak to that first.
Sure, that was, um, if I recall correctly, so there's our gray area, uh, if I recall correctly, there was the intent that. The grant itself provided a limited set of amount of funding. Per grant cycle, so the premise was to try to equally divide the funding to the applicants. And I think we set a maximum at that time, I think that was the intent. And this is going back away, so. That's the best I can recall at this time, but, uh, if, if I recall correctly, the bottom line is just to do it in an equitable and let even-handed way.
Because there's, there's gonna be homeowners who can't afford a match. Um, you know, that could probably demonstrate a financial hardship and. I think we should, you know, consider all applications, not just those that are able to put up. You know, twelve thousand five hundred dollars, which, which is a chunk of money in itself for, for most people. And that's assuming the grant doesn't go over twenty-five thousand, if it's over twenty-five thousand, they have to pay half of that, twelve thousand five hundred plus anything over the, the twenty-five thousand. So I think it would be nice to. Have that as a requirement to stretch our grant funds, but also consider. Um, financial hardship cases. Where people don't have the funds to, to put that match up, but. Desperately need, you know, repairs done to their homes, I mean, the, the purpose of the grant is. To help residents. So we should be able to help all residents in the sustainable community area, even if they can't match the funds.
Yes.
So then. How do we? Verify or quantify? The hardship? So somebody writes us whatever description they give us, it says it is a hardship to match that, and I agree with what you're saying, I understand it was just a matter of. Format of that to how, what, what would be required, who, and how do we do that?
Um, I guess the same way we determine financial hardship with other cases, when people are applying for, you know, water assistance fund or energy assistance funds. Um, you know, we, we could look at various programs to determine what the criteria is. For those, you know, individuals to qualify. But we have a lot of residents who are, you know, at or below the, the poverty level.
I agree.
And there's, there's gonna be folks who just can't afford twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
I agree with that as well, it's just a matter of getting that format.
Right, so we would have to come up with a process to determine financial hardship. Um, I'm, I'm okay with keeping the fifty percent match, so we can extend our grant funds, but it's not a requirement of the community legacy grant itself. To request a match.
Um, Ms. Wellitz, do we know if any? Other municipalities have approached the financial hardship consideration in their grants, or that might be a question for?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
I'm not aware.
Yeah, we've not seen any, um, we actually don't do financial hardship in here, the water, uh, the Seaton Center and the other organizations around. Uh, take financial hardship applications, we don't have any energy assistance programs either, so that's all new to us. Um, as far as establishing a financial hardship program, um, but like I said, we haven't seen any, doesn't mean it's not out there, but just the ones that we checked, we didn't see it.
We could, yeah, we could definitely look at language, um, I mean, I, I know the community legacy, for instance, for. There's also situations where, um. A person can't necessarily come all, come out of pocket for the twelve thousand five hundred dollars in advance. Um, and, and wait for that reimbursement check to come. So in that situation, provisions have been made by other towns. To pay the contractor and then the town be reimbursed, I mean, for. If the object of the grant is to help people, then let's help people as much as we can. Um. Uh, the other thing, you know, we, we also allow businesses to use the same community legacy grant. Which cuts, cuts down on residential improvements. Um, Maryland has a Maryland facade improvement program. It is specifically for businesses where businesses are required to come up with a fifty percent match. So if we split. Our applications out into the two different grants. Um. There may be a higher amount of money to be used for residential improvements, as well as helping those out who may have a financial hardship.
Is that something that, um. Has to be proposed in the original? Cycle, um.
So that's just completely separate grant, so that would have to be something totally different. This only, this, this standard operating procedure only applies to the community legacy facade grant, that's, that's all of it applies to, and the. The state doesn't put a restriction on business or commercial or residential for this grant only. Um, that's certainly the task, something the town can decide whether they want to restrict usage. Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we should restrict businesses from applying, I just think we should use the appropriate grant, grant that's set aside for businesses in particular. That way we can, you know, maximize, you know, maybe our grant return on the, on the two different programs. Um, I know in FY twenty-four, we requested seventy-five thousand for the community legacy grant. So I was wondering, how do we come up with the amount that we request?
So we've requested seventy-five thousand every year since we started the program. Um, how many years? Ten years, and they've only ever given us fifty thousand dollars. Um, I don't know if it's just their standard, they say you asked for this, we're gonna give you. Something less, I don't know if that's their standard or not, um, but that's what we've always applied for, and that's what they've always given us, so.
So kind of jumping in on that, when would the, um. When the presentation occurred at Maryland Municipal, um. They were invited, I invited them actually to come to town and to present, and the premise at, with that time was. To enhance within the, uh, the defined area, but also it was trying to not exclude businesses, because I don't know that there was a business grant available yet. This was, it, it wasn't necessarily a pilot program, but it was new when we jumped on board, so we're kind of a plank holder, now, the other side of it is. The other, the other issue I remember from the time was bandwidth, was town staff able to? Manage more grants. And I think at the time they found themselves somewhat restricted, because they were ramping up on this, if that makes sense, like they're getting acclimated to the process. And virtually, not, not every year, but many years we've tweaked the process, so. My only concern would be is if we add another grant, which I think we should do, um, just to be certain that staff is. Uh, able to meet that demand.
I mean, do we have a full-time grants administrator? She's part-time, but if, if staff were directed to apply for the grant, then staff's gonna apply for the grant.
Right.
Um, and it certainly can be managed at our level. Um, I can't imagine it's. More time consuming this than this grant, um. But we've never been directed to, and frankly, we always just did the community legacy grant, because.
Yeah, if you look at like Thurmont's web, website on the facade restoration program, as, as well as like Brunswick, and there are some others. They only have a facade improvement program for businesses, they don't even offer a, a legacy program for residential. Um. The, the other thing. Um, you know, I know you guys have kicked this around for a while, but, you know. I don't know if it was resolved, the discussion about facade improvements versus routine maintenance. And we need to differentiate the two. Um. You know, for instance, the sustainable community link that's in the SOP. When I click on that link and plug in my home address, it says my home address is eligible. Or the, for. The, the legacy grant, it says that I'm in the SCA, you can check it out.
Yeah.
Um, it says my home's eligible, I live in Pembroke, I need a new roof. Um. You know, should I apply to the program? Probably not, because a new roof is routine maintenance. Um, I need to. Paint the, the front underneath my bay window, you know, painting is routine maintenance.
So, yeah, these were things we discussed at the last meeting, and we actually met with the mayor, and we took some of the guidelines out of it to allow. The, uh, Sustainable Communities Work Group to make those determinations, because to me, these were the discussions we had. Yes, it's probably routine maintenance, but the goal of the facade grant is to improve and beautify. This, the sustainable area, well, we all know, if we look at a certain building in town that hasn't been painted in fifteen years, and then you turn around and put a, a fresh coat of paint on it. You just enhance that property, you just enhance the adjoining properties, so between routine maintenance and, um. Facade, I. I think that's why we took it out, um, my only comment on this is. We need to get this done, because the applications open up. Um, they're due by the end of January, and right now we don't have anything.
Um, well, we haven't received our grant money yet. Um, and technically, we don't have to make a call for applications until January.
Right.
So we still have, you know, all of December and all of January. You know, to hammer it out, we can still request applications while we finalize the process. If, if that's what's necessary, um. You know, if, if you look at the, the old Harold Craig House that's next to the fire department. If, and then, and then if you want to figure out what's an enhancement and what's maintenance, that property is so enhanced, it's beautiful. And it contributes, it contributes to the historic nature of downtown. You know, just putting new plastic siding on doesn't contribute to the historic side of Emmitsburg. Um, you know, you think of Old Town, Downtown Historic Emmitsburg. Um. You know. Those types of improvements that would, that would bring back that history. I would think would, would, should take priority over painting a porch. Um, some of the improvements that we've approved in the past were replacing a new roof, or putting a new roof on, a new shingle roof on. Um. A new shingle roof is not facade, some of those roof, roofs you can't even see from the street. So the facade is the exterior of the building that faces the street. Um, what about the properties that were, we approved? Um, what about the properties that were, we approved for grants that aren't in the sustainable community action area? You know, we approved a property in DePaul Street for a new roof. They are not in the area. So are we going to allow residents outside the area to also apply for the grant? I think there's things we need, need to discuss and hammer out, so we've, we've better defined, you know, our requirements moving forward. You know, it's, it's going to benefit the residents who put in, you know, larger proposals for, you know, work that's more of a, than just simply painting a porch. You know, let's, let's spread the funding out to those properties that are really going to add to the historic nature of downtown Emmitsburg.
While, while I kinda agree with you, it's kinda contradicting what you said about helping the, the poorer families, because somebody that can't afford to fix their place up probably can't afford to have their place painted. And so we're not, you know, they're not, not going to be the, the person that's going to put, restore their house back into, you know, historical shape, but their, their house does need to be painted. So we're, while we're, I, I agree, but
If we had criteria in which to rate the applications, we would be able to rate and rank those applications based on what is the most important criteria to us. And maybe painting is at the bottom of the list if it's a hardship case. I don't know. But some of those properties that need to be painted are owned by landlords who aren't going to invest money to begin with in those properties. So they, they may not even meet a hardship requirement. I'm just saying.
Sure. Well, and I know you're trying to refine the process and that's, that's evident and I think we do want to, um, to do that. And I agree with the idea of opening it up to the business community, having a separate grant so we can push more toward residential. Um, when the process began initially, one of the biggest pushbacks we had in the community was from members of the EBPA. It wasn't the businesses, but the professionals who lived on Main Street and some of them who also had their shops on Main Street. Their concern was this evolving into the creation of an historic district. And they felt very concerned about that because that meant a higher standard of maintenance and a much higher standard of expense. And the, the board went back and forth on that in, in, in a soft way, I'll say. Trying to make it as open and available to many households as possible. Because the fear was if it had that sort of mission creep toward a higher standard of an historic standard of renovation and restoration, that would start marginalizing and excluding households. And I, I think that's what at the time the fear was. So that's why we tried to make the effort to be broad and open. So as we move forward, I do get it. We, we want the best and highest standard, you know, like best and highest use for the funding. But just, I'm a little concerned about if we put in that, uh, restoration component or a high standard of renovation, where maybe somebody, all they could afford is plastic siding to it. So I, I wouldn't want to see anybody not apply because they felt like they didn't have a funding chance to at least, you know, see an improvement on their property.
Well, I mean, I believe that Emmitsburg is on the National Register of Historic Places.
Right.
So, you know, with that in mind, we should be looking at, you know, I mean, we want to increase tourism. We're developing new brochures as we speak to increase tourism to Emmitsburg. You know, don't you want to go into a downtown area where you can see the history and the structure versus, you know, plastic siding on, on a row of houses? I mean,
I do, but on our main street, we have a unique situation where it's not, it's not a showplace, it's a living community. It's a porous street where people also live there. And that's kind of unique about Emmitsburg where some towns, like if you look at downtown Frederick, for example, they have a very good commercial piece on their ground level, but the residential upstairs isn't so hot. And they're trying to do that, but they've been trying that for, for a long while and they will, I, you know, hopefully in time they have success with that. But we have, we have full houses on the street and we have families who don't have that means to, to hit higher standard.
Families on DePaul Street and So if you're one street over, you don't get the luxury of having new siding put on your house and half of it paid for by the town. I mean, so there's a level of equity.
Sure.
You know, that goes into the decision-making process that we, we need to consider.
The premise at the time was to start from the square out, so this might be a good time to review and expand. But the, the, the focal point was the square and then radiating outward. So, you know, it, logic says, yeah, it is time to look beyond.
If, if I may, I'm hearing a lot of ideas. So one of the questions I'm hearing from Commissioner Turnquist is, it sounds as if you're interested to know if the sustainable area can be expanded and what does it entail to do so? So that maybe that grant would have applied to a larger number of residents. Did I hear that correctly?
So it would be, that would, yeah, I mean, we could look at that. That would be useful to more.
Okay, so, um, I think we just expanded the sustainable area too down towards.
That's why we're checking to see if the map that's actually on the website is the most updated one.
Okay.
The state has to approve your sustainable communities work area or, yeah, sustainable area, communities area. And they have certain criteria that have to be met for that, like what they like to see as part of your sustainable communities.
Is it, um, do you, since we just had it expanded, is it unreasonable to go back and ask for them to expand further down to Paul? I know we, or how do we make recommendations to broaden that? And feasibly, what would that look? And I don't necessarily mean for, for this deadline, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you could expand the, the community for, or that area for this grant because the grant's already been written off the current, uh, sustainable, uh, area. But going forward, I don't know if there's a, like, if they give you an option, how many times you can do it or?
It's when we, um, renew our Sustainable Communities Work Plan every five years. That's when we can work with the state to, uh, expand or change boundaries and stuff like that.
When, when does that come up for renewal to?
Twenty twenty-seven. We just did it last year.
So maybe that.
This may be an old map. It's what, we've got to check.
Okay, so maybe that's something we can do in twenty twenty-seven. That sounds like our first opportunity to even try to expand the sustainable area, but it sounds like there's an interest in trying to get as many properties as possible, so that could be one. Thoughts on that one, Commissioner Turnquist?
I mean, I think it's a good idea, but if you look at the Sustainable Communities Action Plan that was done in twenty twenty-two, Emmitsburg did designate Main Street and Seaton and the parks as a priority funding area in which to apply for grants. So to extend it beyond the historic district per se, then we don't necessar- we aren't necessarily meeting that goal of, you know, preserving and upgrading and our, I, our, our downtown area and our parks. You know, the community legacy grant is also used for our parks, to improve our parks and, and new streetlights and new signs. So the more, you know, i- is there a better use of money if we're going to apply for the community legacy grant? I don't know. I don't know that extending, adding more houses necessarily fixes or, or addresses the problem.
That could be, it may or may not be feasible. That would be something that town would have to discuss and, and obviously bring back, I would think. But also looking for financial hardship cases for our, in, to meet our deadline in January. That would be very, I don't think we can deadline-wise, but is that something that we can bring back to the table after the January deadline? Again, we would have to, I would imagine, uh, reference other municipalities if that's something that they even do and where do we start? Not, I think it's a great idea. I just don't know how feasible it is for January and the, the applications that are coming in.
Yeah, since, you know, we have, we've been trying to get this since March or April.
Yeah.
And we got to this point, so I, I don't think any major changes we're going to be able to get through that, that quickly. That's.
I mean, I think the next grant cycle, we could certainly address the hardship issue. You know, but, but at least a- and some of the other, you know, like the, the various grant programs. You know, I think we could come up with something, a, a process or, you know, or, or discuss that in more detail for the next grant round, which we would have to apply for in June of twenty twenty-four.
So does it sound reasonable that we as commissioners direct the town staff apply for that business grant so that we know exactly what monies we're looking at? Because we, that's the step that we haven't taken yet, so we don't even know.
Well, we can't apply for it until June of next year because the timeline for applying for community legacy or the business grant is closed.
Correct.
FY twenty-four.
So the board has to approve to, uh, resolution, basically authorizing staff to apply for the community legacy grant. The board approves that May or, when do we do that? About May? May and then, and then you set the amount we apply for. I would imagine this being another state, um, grant funding source. They're going to require a resolution from the board also authorizing, um, applying for this grant and what amount. So it's certainly something that we know about. We can work on that.
So we could potentially add that in a future meeting as that date gets closer? For that grant?
Well, we would want to do it, um, you know, well before June, so we're prepared to apply for the grant in June. If that's what we're going to do, we should have a process in place. In terms of this round, um, you know, I know we made some changes to make the process transparent, holding the meeting in the evening. You know, having a, having an agenda, having public comment, having the agenda available. But, you know, are we going to also make those applications available at that review meeting? With that in mind, the, the SOP states that the SCWG will allocate the funding. But then it also states that the SCWG will make recommendations regarding the applications that are forward to the Maryland Historical Trust. So. I'm, I'm just looking at my notes. But I guess the question is if the, if the committee will, uh, make the recommendations, will the board then actually approve the funding recommendations?
No, it's your Sustainable Community Works Group that makes the recommendations to the, uh, Maryland Historical Trust. And then the mayor, the Maryland Historical Trust then approves which projects obtain funding.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the Maryland Historical Trust only reviews the applications to make sure that they're in line or that we're not modifying any historic properties. But the, but Maryland Historic Trust is only reviewing the grant to make sure that we don't interfere or bypass their rules and their procedures. But MHT doesn't approve the funding. The grant funding comes from Department of Housing and Community Development.
Yeah, MHT gets them first and she's right. They review them to make sure they align with the goals of the, the grant program and then sends them to the state and then the state gives final approval.
I mean, I, I just, I, I just feel like it would be useful for the, the work group to have, um, a, a rubric to, to rank the applications. Is this painting? Is this, you know, a roof repair? Is this, you know, a historic property? How, how are they allocating the funding now if there's no checklist or, um, scoring guide to rate and rank those applications?
So as I mentioned to Commissioner Bowman-Pallett, well, I guess our town attorney was here during one of the meetings and she strongly, um, suggested not doing a rubric or a scoring system. Yeah, I don't remember why she said why. I can't remember, but that's basically why we didn't put that in there of why there's no scoring sheet.
Although the, the, um, strike through section here, it says the strike through text will be included in the, um, Sustainable Community Work Group guidelines. That's just, yes, moving it into the guidelines. Is that something that, that maybe that we can add on to the guidelines as far as, you know, weighing his, whether it's going to enhance the historic nature of the, versus a home improvement? Maybe because, yeah, I mean, there's a, talking to DHC, it sounds, it sounds as if they don't make that distinction. So then it comes down to our Sustainable Community Work Group to decide what do we value here in Emmitsburg. Am I, am I correct on that? Anybody?
I'm sorry, I was reading.
No, 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 no. So the way I understood it and I was looking for somebody to correct me if I'm wrong, that I don't think the HC makes the distinction between what you would consider routine maintenance and an improvement. If, the, looking in other municipalities, they have approved painting a front porch. So therefore it would come, that would be the purpose of our Sustainable Communities Work Group to decide what we value here in our town and what we would like to see. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so can we direct our Sustainable Communities Work Group to add that as a, a consideration in a guideline that we would weigh? And I think they probably do based on, but I, I, I'm actually not sure because I haven't spoken to them, but is that something that we could add in to consider?
They do have like a checklist. We're trying to find it, but that is one of the paramount things is it's got to align with the goals of this program and must enhance. I can't remember how it's worded. We can't find it, but they do have guidelines of that nature.
They just determine whether it's qualified or disqualified.
Right, right.
Not a score of
Right, right.
Higher low, just.
So that's where the Sustainable Community Work Group.
As, as a thought on the, on the rubric piece, I think sort of if you infer perhaps, they might, the state might be looking at this as a broad criteria to push the money into the community. I think that's really what they're looking to do. So that's why, you know, there are standards in place, but I don't think they are profoundly restrictive. So, um, but if we want to restrict them more, that certainly I think we, we, we would be able to do that in our next grant cycle. Um, I think the committee would look at that with staff and that could be done. And what does MHT do? There's a filter for.
Sorry, they review it to make sure that, um, they go with the guidelines and the historical guidelines.
For a house that is registered or a property that is.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So a non-registered property would just be a house or a whatever.
Right, that goes through the grant administrator first. Like the grant administrator checks the sustainable area, correct?
Yeah.
And then that it gets sent to.
To MHT, yes.
And then they look to make sure it follows their guidelines and then they throw it all back. And that's where the Sustainable Communities Work Group comes in?
So Sustainable Work Group is the first, first step in the process. So we'll look it up, applications, applications will come in and we'll verify that they're within the Sustainable Communities area. Um, the application is complete, like, oh, everything's been signed. The application is complete, like, oh, everything's been signed up on. And once they're all in, she'll contact the Sustainable Communities Work Group, set up a meeting. All the applications, they resume in public, and all the applications are reviewed by that work group. They have their guidelines that they go off of. They're looking to see, they make their recommendations then to MHT. So say we get eight, eight projects, six of them aligned with the goals. Maybe two didn't. So they'll refer those six to MHT, MHT, MHT will review and make sure they meet the Maryland Historical Trust guidelines. And if they say yes, then they send them to the state, and the state sends us a letter, they send us a letter, they send a, a letter approving them, and then we then contact the homeowner and say, here's the grant agreement, we need to sign a grant agreement, you have two years to do your project. Two years to do your project, I think, and then.
I hope everybody heard me. I can't start it. Yes, so then they have two years to complete their project, they send pictures, they send in canceled checks, we send it all into the state, the state then reviews it all. They send the pass through money to the, to the town, then the town sends it on to the homeowner.
Is there any, and I believe you answered this, I'm sorry, it's like, reason to start with sending them to MHT so they can cut things right off the top to begin with, or does, once it goes to MHT, it goes to the state?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to have the town's recommendation.
Okay, so it can't be reversed.
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
But MHT, not every property is going to qualify as MHT, is it, or, so not every property is going to be historic.
Right, but they're just looking to see that they kind of go with the architectural guidelines.
Of the community?
Of the community, that's what they're looking for.
Of the current, well, yeah. The community of that time.
Yeah.
I mean, Main Street would be far different than Pembroke or Brookfield. That's, that's, well.
I mean, it, it's really beside the point, but, you know, through the community legacy, we can also apply, we can also use those grant monies to start up business initiatives and encourage businesses to come to town. So there's a lot of ways we can revitalize our downtown, and since we're using taxpayer state dollars, we should be, you know, transparent with the public and, you know, do our best to make sure we're putting those funds in the best place we can.
And we did, we did talk about that before, I think.
Different grant, so community legacy has several pots of money. And so with different grant, like I know you talked about interior improvements for businesses and some other things through community legacy, there are different pots of money, there are different grants that fall under community legacy. So this one that we've applied, applied for is facade only.
Correct, but that wasn't where I was going, actually.
Oh, okay.
I should have stopped you early, I'm sorry. I know it says in here, it, we will advertise who has been awarded afterwards, but I think we talked about address, new roof, without giving out any personal information.
Yeah, we discussed that.
And we, I think you said yes.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, do you recall?
Said yes to.
Posting the ones that were up for consideration?
So they were, so of all the applications come in, we want to post every application that was received and the dollar amount? Or do you want to post the recommendations that are sent to MHT?
No.
Or at the end?
Even, even before that, so let's say we got 10 applications.
Right.
To, in the spirit of transparency, saying, okay, you know, 328 Mountaineers Way, not sustainable area, I get that, new roof. Just so that the public is aware of where in the sustainable area which properties are applying and what they're asking for, I think was what we talked about at one point before, rather than after, I think after it's awarded, yeah, absolutely. But is there any reason why that couldn't be on our community grant page? It also might give ideas to other people of what types of things they could potentially apply for.
The project allocation, I think.
Yes.
Could be, as it says in here about not providing the grant because of personal information out there, but.
Right, like
But it's also, also is labeled, I mean, there's a sign put out when the, when the project is being done, so everybody knows what work is being, the work that is being done, how some or all of it is being paid for.
Right.
So that, that's
Oh, you mean a sign when, when the work is being done?
There's a sign posted, I think on all the properties, isn't it? There's a sign posted that says, project done by Legacy Grant.
Yes, all right, I didn't know that.
Partially or fully, I don't know.
Right, something like that. Yeah, I mean, I don't see any reason why we couldn't post once all the applications came in. Even when we make the meeting announcement, you know, Sustainable Work Group will be meeting on this date at this time. These are the properties that will be reviewed. And just list the address and the project name.
Yeah.
What is, I mean, I don't see a problem doing that.
Yeah.
If they're rejected, we might want to have some description of why, because it may just be lack of funding.
Right.
Not because it was not a, not the non-qualifying request.
Right.
But we're out of money.
Right.
Whatever, the, the pot's gone.
Right, right.
So they can try to apply again, or somebody else can apply for the same type of work and know that it is really not eligible, because.
That's, that is a good point, do they typically, typically get a response if something's rejected, so they know?
Says they do.
Okay, all right, good, all right.
Yeah, everybody's notified one way or the other.
Okay.
Is that usually what it is, a dozen or so?
What do we normally, about dozen? Your mic's on, sorry.
Yeah, that doesn't seem right.
Surprised at him anymore.
So, in order to, so that can, that can be added then? For or into the saying that the, the applications, well, the titles or the properties would be posted?
And did you say that's in advance of the SCWG meeting?
Yeah, so like if
So what, so here on page, I'm sorry, page 33?
Yes.
Number eight. An agenda should be made for the meeting, copy should be printed for the public. In bold, we say, address, name, description, project, and amount of funds awarded, we put it on the website on the page designated for Community Legacy Program. Prior to the meeting.
I think I'm looking at the wrong one. You said it was number eight?
Yeah, on page 33.
33.
Page 33.
Two of five. So that's about all the properties that were awarded.
Right, an agenda should be made, this is the agenda for the meeting, the Sustainable Work Groups meeting. So, that would include everybody that has submitted an application, it would include their address, name, description of project, amount of funds awarded, okay.
Not, yeah, not awarded, but requested.
Yeah, like, so like the first step, like here are the applicants, and then the, the part in bold there looks like after the award was mentioned.
But I think Kathy is saying that that would be posted on the website.
Prior to
Prior to the meeting.
Okay, kind of like we do our agendas here, you know, posted several days a week in, in advance. That's not a problem.
Commissioner Turnquist, does that help with the transparency aspect?
Yeah, I like that a lot.
Okay.
Let me ask just a clarification on one thing unrelated to what we've covered. I'm looking at page 32 of 46, I'm looking at number seven in bold, and I'm just wondering about all the language in number seven is a direction, one seems to be an option, where everything it says, applicants will. Whereas one says they should. I'm wondering, do we want to say they should, or do we want to say they will? Regarding, also show how their projects lead to the enhancement of economic sustainability and visual appeal. Excuse me.
I see what you're saying, demonstrate they will also have to show how their project led to enhancement, we'll just change the word to.
Is that, is that within the, the character of what you're trying to get done? I mean, I just think if we're compelling them, then we're consistent in compelling them. Hopefully we get a better product, I hope.
I, I agree with that.
Thank you.
And we may be able to put a sentence or two right in that paragraph about, you know, types of household repairs that are like examples, examples that will be strongly considered versus at the bottom of the list for funding.
I like that.
We could probably list out some of the ones that have been approved already, yeah, awarded in the past.
Unfortunately, most of those were painting and Bruce.
They were. They were.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Turnquist, it sounds as if we have a few items that we would like to follow up on. Moving forward as far as looking at the sustainable area, potentially looking at that other, that additional grants when it comes up in June. Is there an option to go forward with financial hardship for our next round? Did I miss anything of those three?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think if we could add to this round those examples and tightening up number seven, as Kathy suggested. And, and then fixing number eight on the second page about the, the projects will be posted before, prior to the meeting. I think that gives criteria for the work group to, to start to look at other other things when they're reviewing these applications. And then I think we can hammer out the other things in a work session before we apply for the next grants in FY25.
Yeah, we actually discussed that this morning, that if we could, you know, get it through this time.
Yeah.
And then tweak it and make the, the changes for the next one. So we, we expected there to be changes for the next one.
Yeah, those two things would tighten up the SOP quite a bit.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, all right, so now that we've changed everything, let's see. How would I word the motion? Do I hear a motion to accept the standard operating procedure for the community legacy facade with the following as modified? Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion was made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney, is there any other further discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries five to zero, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Right. Onto agenda item number six, for consideration, authorizing $300,000 of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA money for the fiscal year 24 Water Fund Operating Budget, we will turn to staff for that presentation.
All right, thank you.
Oh wait, I forgot. That was for before.
Okay.
It was delayed. I'll get used to it.
So, for tonight's meeting, we're asking for the authorization of $300,000 of American Rescue Act Plan Act or ARPA money be designated for the fiscal year 24 Water Fund Operating Budget. Just kind of going over what we're asking for and just some back information. The town of Emmitsburg received payments from the American Rescue Act Plan in the amount of $3,152,038.98. We received those monies in two tranches, one in July of '21 for the $1,575,429, the second payment was received in August of '22 in the amount of $1,576,608.99. On page 42, I just kind of gave an ARPA overview for anybody that was maybe not been familiar or just a refresher. Number one, the final rule showed the four things that you may use ARPA money for. Letter D being the one that the town has designated the money for is invest in water, sewer, and broadband, making necessary improvements or investments to improve access to clean drinking water to support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure and expand broadband internet. Number two, it outlines the restrictions on the use, ARPA money cannot be used to offset a net tax revenue, deposits in pension fund cannot be used for debt service or replenishing financial services, no satisfactions of settlements and judgments, and cannot be used for projects that undermine COVID-19 mitigation practices. The timeline, all funds must be incurred on or after March 3, 2021, and further costs must be obligated by December 1st, or 31st, 2024, and they have to be expended by December 31, 2026. One of the, so my question to the Department of Treasury is, so the town of Emmitsburg is considering using some of its ARPA monies for the loss of revenue during COVID, since several are large users of water significantly decreased the amount they used. Our water fund is currently showing a loss since that happened, is this something that ARPA money could be used for? The answer from Department of Treasury is yes, it can be used for government services in your water fund. It can, it must be used for expenses related to the provision of government services. You may not use it for replenishing financial reserves or rainy day funds. So we took on, we took the loss, or we had, I had staff look into the loss in the water, water fund during COVID-19 pandemic. And our, our largest water consumer is FEMA. And during the course of COVID-19, over the three years, we lost $300,000 in revenue just through FEMA alone. The purpose of this designation of 300,000 would be applied directly to cover all normal fiscal year 24 water operating funds that are non-payroll in nature. So they can't go to any payroll, it cannot go to any human resources accounts, it cannot go to your debt service, any debt service that we might have on existing loans. So we're asking the board to designate $300,000 to be moved to the water fund to be used for operating costs, maintenance costs of the water fund in fiscal year 24.
Thank you, any questions, discussion from the board?
Is this grant money or loan money?
So this was, this is all money. I said, free money, there is no free money. This is American Act Rescue Plaque Plan Act money that the federal government passed down through the states who then passed down to their municipalities to help combat the loss in COVID-19.
So there's no payback?
No, we will be audited, probably heavily, but there's no payback.
Is there any additional fees for receiving this money that, that we have to?
No, no additional fees.
Fees of any sort or anything?
No.
I know it's hard to believe, but the federal government gave us money. With no strings attached.
Additional comments, questions?
Yeah, I love this. I mean, this is going to help our, help out our water fund. You know, my position's always been to have no 36% increase after year one. So this, this goes a long way in, in helping that goal, I know we have a lot more digging to do, to find the additional money, but I think this is a fantastic start.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to compliment town staff for being creative and rethinking the issue and pursuing this.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to make a motion if there's no other comments from others.
Oh, I do have
Okay.
A, a comment. Now I forgot what it was, hang on. Oh, um, you said it would be used for operating expenses, not payroll, not HR, not debt service.
Correct.
Within the operating service, how does, what are
So, so non-related, I just took a look at the budget again. So non-payroll and non-debt service in your, in your water fund for fiscal year 24 is $367,160. So your big, your, your big ticket items are your So your big, your, your big ticket items are your operating supplies, your chemicals, your vehicle, your repairs and maintenance, electric, oil and propane, contractual insurance. We have large ticket items that will certainly eat up that three hundred thousand dollars that will then in turn save your utility fees.
Great, thank you. Breaking it down like that is extremely helpful. And again, echoing what the other commissioners said, thank you for finding that. I know that's much needed and our town will appreciate that. So do I hear a motion to approve the three hundred, hang on, is there a motion to authorize the three hundred thousand of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA money for the fiscal year twenty four water fund operating budget?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Hoover. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion has been accepted five to zero. Motion has passed. Thank you. Thank you. Turning to agenda item number seven, which is a presentation and discussion by Chantel and Glow Fiber. You do have something to bring up on here, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Just make sure to activate your microphone there. Thank you, sir.
So, good evening, everyone. My name's Kirk Costco. I, I work for Chantel Communications, or Glow Fiber is our product name. Thanks to the commissioners and mayor and residents of Emmitsburg and to the town officials for having us here this evening to do this presentation. So I am going to skip through this relatively quickly. It's very similar to the one we did, I believe, back in August. And please stop and, and if you have any questions, anything that you want to go over. So Chantel has been around a long time. We're not a new startup company, about a hundred and twenty one year old company based out of Harrisonburg, Virginia. Started off as a telephone company down there, Shenandoah Telephone. Relatively small, eight hundred and forty seven employees, two hundred and sixty seven in annual million in annual revenues. And we have a hun, currently, our product is fiber to the home. That's what we offer. And this states we have a hundred and eighty two thousand. The, the latest number I have as of the board meeting we had on Friday was two hundred thousand homes now have, we've passed with fiber to the home. So we talk about where we are and where we're located. We're about nine thousand miles. When I started two and a half years ago, it was seven thousand miles of fiber. So we've built a lot of fiber in the last two years. Really what the focus would be on is around Frederick and Frederick County. So we've expanded, we have a friend, Kirk, we have a cable franchise agreement with the city of Frederick. We have a cable franchise agreement with Middletown. We recently signed a cable franchise agreement with Thermont. And we're here this evening really to discuss a possible cable franchise with with Emmitsburg. So, and we also have been done work with Frederick County as well. So we have some grants that we were awarded to, in, in Frederick County to serve underserved and unserved homes with broadband, about four thousand approximately homes. So we, we're doing a lot of expansion in this area. Yeah, just keep going. No, it's okay. So we are cut, we're one hundred percent fiber network. We offer three services, internet, video, and phone. And really, the, the cable franchise is based on the video products that we offer. Ultra spot, ultra high speed bandwidth, and our speeds are symmetrical. So whatever we offer download, we also have the same speeds upload. So if customers take six hundred meg download, they would get six hundred meg upload. That's a lot different than traditional the cable companies offer. And we currently have speeds up to, I think, two point one, actually five, five gig now. So, and those would be symmetrical speeds too. So the benefits, a significant, significant capital investment in this marketplace. We're not here to look for any funds from the community. We're completely self-funded. And really what we're looking to do is come, come in and compete against your existing providers. So currently, there's a cable franchise agreement with Comcast, I believe. There may be other broadband providers in the marketplace. We would come in and compete directly with them. We're not looking to replace any of your current providers. So what we're looking at is municipal engagement, which is really where we're here this evening. Really what we would like to do is start a cable franchise negotiation with the, with the town of Emmitsburg. We just completed one last month with Thermont. And Thermont uses the same attorneys, so they're very familiar with the agreement. They actually have the, the Thermont agreement. And probably that would be a great starting point for the negotiation with Emmitsburg if we get to that point. And these are some of the prices that we currently offer, some of the speeds. So our internet speeds, six hundred, six hundred megabits, and it's six hundred by six hundred, one point two gig by one point two gig. We have four levels of video service, and then we have a phone product for twenty dollars a month. And then when you bundle products, you take internet and, and TV, there's discounts involved as well. So I know that was a relatively quick run through, but it's very similar to the, the presentation we did probably a month or two ago. So I wanted to make sure we left room for questions and kind of talk about next steps, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the commissioners?
The, the speed issue, symmetrical upload-download piece, will there ever be breaking, like slowing of service if there's a high demand in the future?
Now, with, with fiber, it's actually, the way the fiber distribution network is built, it's able to handle the capacity. So, and people's, you know, the number of devices in people's homes just continues to grow. I can remember a few years ago, it was an average of four or five. Probably today, it's probably around twelve to fifteen when you talk about printers, phones, computers, gaming systems, TVs. So, yes, it's very capable of handling, probably more so than even maybe traditional networks. Especially on the, the upload speed. So when you talk about symmetrical speeds, in the upload speed we were talking about, that's where you're at home on a conference call, and you're basically communicating. It could be a telemedicine call that you're doing, could be students that are doing projects, homework, classes from home. So that's where that symmetrical speed really becomes important.
Would the, would the fiber be run to all areas of the town, like out to our town limits?
So the, the way that the, the cable franchise agreement is, is worded with serviceable, we make a best effort to serve the, the majority of the community. So I don't know that we've looked at the engineered as far as what percentage we can service, but generally in small communities, it's a large, a large percentage of the community. But there's not, as someone who's coming in as an overbuilder to existing, to the existing incumbent provider, the, the obligation we have is a little different than, than maybe with the existing agreement. And we've done a lot of agreements where the existing provider is Comcast, and we utilize the language where we do a best, best effort to serve as many as we can. And when you, and when you're talking about committing and building a type of network for this, like this, it's several million dollars investment. So the more homes you can service, the better it is for a payback model.
And did you say at the last presentation that you don't put the fiber under the ground? Or?
So we would follow the existing utilities, mostly power. So if the power is in an area is on telephone or utility poles, then we would go on those utility poles as well.
So it'd be more up in the air versus?
Well, it would depend on, it would depend on the neighborhood. So I noticed in town, it looks like a lot of, a lot of the facilities are aerial. So we would probably go aerial.
The old, yeah, the old, the older section?
Then, then we would go underground. We basically follow whatever the, you, you existing utilities do.
So you put it in, you have a franchise here, and you put all your stuff in, we have a new development come in. And how would they be served?
So it would depend on what type of development it was. A lot of times, if it's, so what, what the cable franchise agreement does is it allows us to use the public utility right away. So it would depend on what type of development went in. If it was a apartment complex where there was private easements involved, we would have to negotiate those separately. If it was a housing, like a single housing development, then we would certainly look to service those areas as well.
Not sure how to ask, but so I, I mean, I guess really what I want to see, I, I don't know, but the previous presentation more does. Can we get a copy of the agreement that Thermont has or?
Absolutely.
Some sample of that to kind of evaluate?
Yes.
What, you know, how that, how it really looks and how it would work? And, and then maybe consider what's in that agreement that we like or don't like, and, and redline that or what have you, and?
Yeah, what we, generally what happens too is the, the attorney would take a look at the existing Comcast agreement or whoever's, I believe it's.
It is Comcast, yes.
And so they would want to make sure that provisions are similar. So, so there's a lot of work that the attorneys would do, and generally with the town manager involved and, and members of the council as well, so.
So I think having options is always good. Competition and pricing is always good. It's something to consider. Do we survey our residents in our community to find out what kind of interest there is on, out there first before we go with moving forward? And likewise, something that I would be interested in seeing is, you know, a map of what type of work and where, so we know what to expect. As far as like, you don't want to fix one thing and break another, so to speak. So what kind of disruptions would we expect to traffic flow? You know, the downtown areas tight to begin with. I would want a very clear picture of what we would be moving forward with and what our community interests.
So Commissioner Bowman-Pal, this requires a public hearing, an advertised public hearing. So that's when you can get all your public input and get into kind of the, the meat and potatoes of what they're proposing. We just need to know if that's the direction the board wants ahead.
So the public hearing doesn't necessarily, that it's still dependent on, we have to get through the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. So.
I would imagine we have to change the charter or an ordinance to?
Yeah, it would have to be adopted by ordinance. Leslie is very familiar with the process because she did help Thermont. So if, if this is a direction that we want to go in, she's very familiar with it and would send me absolutely all the steps.
And all the construction would be, generally, it's all going through a permitting process through the, the town permitting department. And so you would know exactly where we're building and when. It's basically the, it's a partnership between the, the town and, and our company to kind of work together to, to build the network.
Any other discussion, questions, comments, commissioners?
I like the idea of competition.
I like the idea too. I don't mind seeing it go to a public hearing, although I would like more information as far as the scope of the work and see that we as a town survey our community and make sure that we posted it out so that we can solicit feedback. This is not a decision that I would want to make in isolation.
I would like the competition too.
Does this require a motion?
No, it's not a vote, it's, it's not an action item, but based off the conversations, then I will reach out to Leslie and get our next steps, but it will definitely be advertising for a public hearing, which will probably happen after the first of the year.
Okay. Thank you. You may have said, but where's your home base?
The, the company's based out of Harrisonburg, Virginia.
Okay.
I'm out of Pennsylvania. Yeah, we, we are anxious to move forward. I think we've been, we started dialect, some, some conversations with, with the town about thirteen months ago. So we would like to keep things moving if possible, so.
So as part of the package, it would come to staff for consideration. My hope would be that we would see a map of the town and identify where it would go and where it would not go. Like if, if you're confident there would be the scale, the, the whole scope of the town, that'd be terrific. And if there are areas that you find that are just, are not able to be connected, then we just really want to identify that. So that way that, you know, folks know that it's an option for, for not.
Thank you. I can check on that for sure.
Yeah. One other question, so from staff's perspective, so I understand the, the public hearing, but until we get a proposal or see what the draft proposal is, with Thermont has to review that, to see that the town council really does want to pursue, pursue this or go forward, I guess we wouldn't do a town hearing or, or a public hearing just yet. We, we want to evaluate the major impact, if any, and what it covers within the town, if it's enough or not for the town to consider.
Or does that all get wrapped up at public hearing at one time?
Let me, let me check with Leslie. I would think it would all happen one time, but I mean, there could be preliminary meetings leading up to the public hearing. And I will certainly ask her. And if the board wants to, if they want to add this as, if, if that's the case, I can't get a public hearing done in time for December, but if you want to review any possible additional paperwork at the December meeting, if that's what she says, but let me follow up with her on tomorrow, Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We look forward to.
Yes, I'm going to drive two and a half hours home and be up at six AM to be a judge of elections for tomorrow's election, so. Quite understandable, but thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay. Um, it looks as if now we're turning to staff for the agenda of the December fifth, twenty twenty three town meeting.
Yes, thank you. So the December fifth town meeting is Tuesday, the day after the Christmas tree lighting. Two administrative business items. First one would be free holiday metered parking for consideration. Number two, for consideration ordinance twenty three dash twelve, which would amend Town of Emmitsburg code two point eight oh, point oh two oh, changing the start time of the Citizens Advisory Committee meetings. I have consent agenda items. I have four reappointments to the Parks Committee with the same term of twelve five twenty three through twelve five of twenty five. That would be Shannon Cool, Sandy Uml, Steve Starlipper, and Amanda Ryder. And then appoint Diane Walbrecker to the Planning Commission with a term of December fifth, twenty three through December fifth, twenty eight. I was told to put that on there. Is I, no?
No, no, I just hadn't heard.
Oh. Glad you're here.
Praise.
I'm still on a tour.
Appoint Dale Sharer to the Planning Commission as an alternate of twelve five twenty three through twelve five twenty eight, excuse me. All right, and then three agenda items. Number one, approval of resolution twenty three oh seven R Community Development Block Grant Program Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity Plan for consideration. That's a requirement of that state grant. Number two, approval of resolution twenty three dash oh eight R Community Development Block Grant Program Minority Business Plan for consideration. Number three, approval of bid for the purchase and installation of smart parking meters downtown for consideration. Do we want to add the glow fiber in case, or if I? Do we want to add the glow fiber in case? Or if I reach out to Commissioner Bowman-Pallott and the mayor and they give the okay, I can add it after I talk to Leslie.
Excuse me. Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, so after I get a le- letter from, or an email back from Leslie, I'll get approval to add it if need be.
Okay. Do you, do you want, um, farmers market changes? Oh, no, that doesn't require a vote, I'm sorry.
Yep, we're good.
Um, wait. Um, and I know at some point, when we were discussing the budget, I think it was August or July, July or August, we were talking about coming back to, um, when we passed the budget to do our due diligence and look at charges to the water fund. I would like to, at some point, come back to that, saying that we did pass the budget, knowing that we'll come, come back in the future. And now it's, uh, it's December. So, um, I would like to have that on at some point or a discussion as far as. Yes.
So, we're actually just having our first quarter review of fiscal year twenty-four in two weeks.
So, how about January? Okay.
Yeah, because we could have something else that we've got to discuss with the water. We've had something we didn't foresee with the larger metered, uh, fac- facilities that we're having some, uh, nonprofits and small businesses, their bills are jumping two hundred percent. Uh, and for sewers, jumping like a hundred and eighty percent. So, their bills went from four to five hundred dollars to twelve to thirteen hundred dollars. I don't think that was our intent when we passed this. So, that's something we're, we're gonna have to probably look at and get, gives us a little more time to, to look at that.
Yes, yes. It'll give us a little bit more time. And I think too, we, we did, we did make a promise that we want to revisit the water charges, the charges to the water fund, make sure, uh, see if, what makes sense to move around and maybe nothing. But it's, it is something we did promise to the community when we passed the budget.
No, actually, the, the nonprofits, we were able to just lower their meter size. So, like, Seaton Center had a six-inch meter because of their sprinkler system. And they've only used seven thousand gallons of water. So, their bill went from four hundred dollars to eighteen hundred dollars. And so, we just lowered that meter size to, to bring it to where they had a raise in, in price, but not that drastic. Uh, some of the churches were the same way. Uh, Dr. Portier was the same way. And, you know, they, they required a bigger meter because of sprinkler systems and, you know, all, uh, because they had to have, uh, the slop sinks and the, the mop sinks and all that stuff. But they're not using the water. They're only using, you know, a little over the middle. And their, and their bills went very, very, very high.
I thought when we, when we put the sprinklers in years ago, that that was part of an ordinance that was actually made, that that the size of the meter was strictly related to, well, not strictly, but was related to the sprinkler system that you would use the meter size that would be on that building had there not been a sprinkler.
That is correct.
We did, we were able to go in and reduce those down.
Are you saying we overcharged them all this year?
No, it's just the, the new policy when it went into place. It, we didn't see that coming. I'm sure none of us thought the bills were gonna go to eighteen hundred dollars for seven thousand gallons of water.
So, what about the people who do actually have that size meter? Are their bills gonna jump by two hundred percent?
Because they need them for the building or because they need them for the sprinkler?
Which is it?
Well, if they need them for the building, then, then, then yes, it would, and it.
In those situations, was it only needed for the sprinkler?
If it's only needed for the sprinkler, then it was intended a while, long, long ago. The sprinkler, if the sprinkler was the deciding factor, that larger meter, then you would focus on, what would the building had, have if, if it was not for a sprinkler?
Right, but the sprinkler wouldn't have consumed any water usage unless it was activated.
But, but it has to be there so they can, if it is needed, it has to be able to supply it.
Oh, and we're charging them six thousand gallons regardless of how much they use for the sprinklers.
Because, because you get charged by the, because of the meter size, right? Such, such your, your, your rate.
Goes back to the six thousand gallons.
The, the, the meter set your rate.
Okay, um, is there anything else as far as the agenda for December fifth? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as modified for December fifth, twenty-twenty-three town meeting? Thank you. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? No. Hearing none. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone against? Oh, aye, sorry. Anyone against? No? Okay. Pass five to zero. Um, staff, are there any other updates or announcements that we need to be aware of?
No.
Uh, just one reminder, before the December fifth meeting, we will be having, uh, dinner here. Hopefully, I'm gonna be able to get downstairs at the senior center with town staff, all the maintenance workers. Uh, so we can do a little, uh, holiday, little meet and greet type thing, because I'm sure there are some employees that we haven't met.
Is it in the evening?
Uh, yeah, before the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, before the meeting, uh, we'll probably eat at five-thirty or so and, uh, then just be, we'll come right up here to them. And I'm also gonna have staff stay for the meeting, beginning of the meeting, so they can be introduced to the public and people can see who's keeping the town running.
Thank you. Um, as far as signing the approved text amendments and resolutions, do we do that after we adjourn the meeting?
Yes, and I believe we need to take board picture, a board picture and then individual commissioner pictures.
After we adjourn?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll see everybody at the turkey trot. Yeah.
Yes, any help is, is, would definitely be, um, appreciated. Kadim will be here. Jess, did you make the decision? Yeah, Jess will be here. Um, I think the mayor and Commissioner O'Donnell will be here. But anybody else that wants to help, um, hot chocolate, coffee, donuts, firewood.
Okay. Very nice. We'll see. Hopefully, we'll have a good turnout.
Do you need firewood?
I think somebody's donating it.
We have a donor usually who I've contacted and waiting to hear back. But if I don't hear back soon, I will contact you.
I can get you whole truckload. Um, I pick up truckload. Is that enough?
That would be enough.
Truckload.
We use the whole fireplace. I run a dinky load and I got chapped eyes.
I got a half load on the back of my truck now. I had for camping. So, you can, you're welcome to have it. But I can get you all the wood you want.
Okay, with that, um, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting, to close the meeting?
The meeting?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Turnquest, Quest. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-eight. And I'm glad I went by my phone and not the clock, because we need to fix that.